This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, everybody, welcome to Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, meeting of the Monterey Select Board, here in downtown Monterey. It's Alan Paul. Stephen Weiss here with you as Chair, President Justin Maycliff, President John Weingold. Let me make the following statement. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please raise your hand. In order to be recognized by the Chairman, please state your name for the record before you begin to speak on an issue: Regulation of Participation by Public and Open Meetings. No person shall address a public meeting governmental body without permission of the presiding officer at such meeting. No person shall request that such presiding officer be silent if, after a warning from the presiding officer, a person persists in disorderly behavior. Said officer may order him or her to withdraw from the meeting. If he or she does not withdraw, may order an officer. And the open meeting law does not require that public bodies allow for public comment or participation during meetings. Please raise your hand. I can, I will, I will make an effort. For some reason, I'm not looking your way and you're raising your hand. You say I'm raising my hand. I will try to, to keep an eye on the screen as well. I know a few people tried to raise their hands last time and I did not see them because the more people that participate, the smaller the little boxes are, the smaller the little boxes are, the harder it is for them to see a raised hand. I will do my best. If somebody sees somebody on the screen with their hand raised, please let me know. We're gonna, we're gonna take care of two pieces of town business and then we'll get into the other stuff. And also keep the vibes, keep the vibes at 6:00 PM, which is during meeting with the Finance Committee. So we are going to try to keep this meeting within. Michelle has a great job of keeping her meetings within a certain slot period of time. I myself like to talk, so hopefully we'll keep it down. Okay, the first one is Transfer Station appointment Bruce Istedt. So the Town Administrator and myself had a meeting with Bruce who answered the ad that we put out for a transfer station I personally found him very enthusiastic. As a matter of fact, he actually wanted to be hired right there, then and there on the spot. Didn't realize that we actually have to make a motion. But I think he would make a fine addition to the, to the transfer station. And obviously, we're gonna do this for probationary period of how long?
Three months.
Three months?
Three months.
So I would make a motion to hire Bruce Istedt for probationary period of three months. Is there any other information that you would like to share with the rest of the board that you gleaned from your interview? So he was, he was a retired gentleman who, who is very enthusiastic about serving the town of Monterey and working as a transfer station. He was a carpenter by trade and therefore doesn't have a specific resume, as do many of the trade men and women that worked in Berkshire County. And quite frankly, the probationary period will let us know if he is, if he makes a, if he makes a good part of the team or not. Jim, correct operation. Have you, did you have a chance to meet Bruce?
I did not, unfortunately.
Okay.
I will second your motion to appoint Bruce for three months probationary period transfer station.
Any other comments from the public? No, there'd be none? I go, yes?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, so the second one is Green and Haper Bill. So the town of Monterey, the taxpayer of Monterey has approved a total amount of $16,000, I believe it was $16,000 dollars, who pays an investigator for their services. Regardless of what you think of their services, they do need to get paid. However, they have sent us a supplemental bill for an additional $5,140.
No. The second bill is for $8,925, but it's $5,140 more than we approved.
So we approved $16,000, right?
Right. And we've already paid $12,216. So the total is $21,140.
Which is $5,000, which is that $140 over to $16,000?
Right, but we still need to pay.
No, I understand that. I, no, I understand that. What I'm saying is, the townspeople approved $16,000. They received, they, they sent us another bill that is $5,140 over that $16,000. Is that correct?
Well, really what happened was, the town meeting approved $10,000 and then the Finance approved the Reserve Fund or Transfer Request for an additional $6,000.
Correct. Okay, so let's, let's, so the, so the Plans Committee and the townspeople. So they were, so the total amount was approved of $16,000. There's $5,140 additional that requested by Green and Haper. It's interesting because I actually reviewed the, reviewed the invoice, as I understand it, it's in the public record. And I tried to do a little calculation and it seems like there, most of them are, are for charges that occurred after they drafted the investigation report. And February 27th, correspondence from the town clerk. March 1st, correspondence from John Weingold. March 3rd, correspondence from John Weingold. March 4th, correspondence from town clerk. March 6th, correspondence with town clerk. March 7th, correspondence with town clerk. March 8th, continued draft investigative report. March 9th, correspondence with John Weingold. March 10th, correspondence with John Silver. March 11th, correspondence for the Town Administrator. And then in time to draft it. So that's where that additional money was spent. Oh, and there's also to attend a select board meeting and to review and edit draft report. So since we do have, so I don't know, so where, where would this money come from?
Steve?
Wait, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know who's first, Don or Susan?
I just, um, what would the total, if we paid this, what is the total amount they will have invoiced us? Because that still wasn't clear to me.
Twenty-one thousand?
One hundred and forty.
One hundred and forty. Did you hear that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Don?
Question. I thought that when you approved the additional money, that you sent an email to the firm saying that this was the total amount that you could pay by the town. Isn't I correct?
Yes.
Then I don't understand why you're paying more money. And my other question is, if the letters from Mr. Weingold, for example, were sent by him personally, I think you, and not by the Select Board, then if you decide to pay it, I don't know why, he should be reimbursing the town.
Any emails were sent in follow-up from requested documents during the interview, okay? That's what it was done. Your name's on here too, reviewing your emails. So maybe you should reimburse the town.
I didn't send any emails after they, and they drafted the report.
Yeah, so it is interesting, John, that at the public meeting, you did accuse me of actually reaching out to Green and Haper. You did. I did not, actually. So, 2/27/2022, review and, receipt and review of email correspondence with town clerk regarding your email correspondence from Don Colburn. No, I'm not Don Colburn. I know your name. So you're not, you're not addressing my, my issue. You actually accused me of reaching out to Green and Haper. You did. I did not. Before your interview. Yes, you did. It's on the bill. Before my interview. Like, before your interview.
I'd like to point out.
Prepare for interview with Steve Weiss, including review of documents he presented for investigation and continued review of documents provided by Justin Maycliff. As did most, as did most of the people interviewed, provided documents.
Would anyone like to see the invoice? Because the particular conversation that we're discussing, over two days, took almost eight hours for a total of $2,000 to John Weingold and additional other expenditures. Just so that everyone is transparent here.
Yes.
But you're over, you're not listening to what he just said, that the emails that he sent were requested by Mrs. Green. He needed additional doc, she needed additional documentation. She asked him for them.
So actually, okay, so that's not, that's not entirely correct. Review, March 9th, March 9th, 2022, reviewing an email correspondence to John Weingold, re-Weiss documents. Okay, so, so if she had a question about the Weiss documents, then she'd ask Weiss?
Well, maybe she was asking him. You don't know what the pertinent information was. Maybe you should ask my green.
All I see here, all I see here, Nancy, is that, is that following, following a certain period of time, according to Green and Haper, not me, John Weingold, who accused me of reaching out to Green and Haper, actually did it. So.
No, she asked him. He says she had email requests from her asking him for additional documentation.
I don't really believe that.
Can I just say that no more money will be spent without the approval of the Finance Committee, without going to a special town meeting. And I'm just letting you know that there's no guarantee that the Finance Committee will approve additional monies.
But, and, but that really is the decision that needs to be made, is are we going to contest the invoice? Are we going to request money from the Finance Committee or from the Reserve Fund?
Excuse me, Steve.
Yeah.
Can either?
Hi, all.
Hi, Steve.
And Justin and John.
Can either a select board member or someone who's speaking in the audience, please identify the notes in time they speak?
Okay, sorry about that. We were, we did that, well, on Wednesday, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, listen, so, so since we've heard from the Finance Committee, I think that there should be a better understanding of what exactly occurred with those various bills beyond this itemized list. And, and the taxpayers should understand what they're paying for. Yes, Sean?
Sean Tryon. So I thought at the town meeting, especially that we had, that it was very clear that this wasn't to go over $10,000. No, it wasn't voted that way, but the residents voiced their opinion not to go over $10,000. It went to $16,000, now we're at $21,000. So we've already done what they didn't want to do. So maybe these documents should be made public, like everything else has been, so we can actually see what people have provided to, and we can prove to the residents that this is why this money's been spent.
Okay, so I would, so I would make a motion, that's a good point, Sean. So I would make a motion that we, that we reach out to Green and Haper for a, for a more in-depth discussion of what, of what the, the actual correspondence was. Yes, Michelle?
Michelle Miller, for follow. May I suggest that we, that the Select Board make a motion to not accept the report, which upon reading it was quite a bit of, very, like I said in my letter, an eighth grader could have done better. And I see what you mean when you said last week it was built with Mr. on the ladder. In fact, it seems like it was built on sand and the sand washed away, left a bunch of unsubstantiated claims and obviously left out people like Sean and the other gentleman who stands accused. So not only is it not complete, it's not well constructed, it's not well written, it's just very garbled. And for us to be pinning more money on it, I think, I would think that the Select Board should vote to not accept the report, go back to these people, tell them that they have not accepted their report. They should revise their billing for the poor management of the whole project and let them decide what to do. When someone gives you a price, that's the price.
So.
If the, if someone on the board broke the contract by, or was aiding and abetting the raising of this at $350 an hour.
I, and I don't, Steve, I think the Select Board actually didn't set as clear of a limit as you remember. So I do think that is incumbent. I do, I mean, if you can find the email where you said the limit was $16,000, then please do find it, because I don't, I don't recall that. And it was a mistake for sure.
So, I mean, well, Mel, can I take a comment and then I'll get to you? We're talking about taxpayer money. In Western Massachusetts, especially small towns, taxpayers from, the taxpayers, taxpayers of Monterey get to set the limit. And we have to abide by it. As a matter of fact, when people, you're gonna go to town meeting and somebody's gonna stand up and say, there's runaway spending, you're overspending. And the truth of the matter is, the Select Board cannot spend any much beyond what was raised and appropriated without specific permission, or at least in conjunction with the Finance Committee. So you just have a Finance Committee Chair who's saying that, that at least for her, she's not, she's not interested in spending anything beyond what was permitted by the Finance Committee and the, and the taxpayers. We can't do that. We can't just, we can't just say, yeah, we can spend more of this and spend more of that. We cannot do it. So, so at a minimum, I think that at least there should be, there should be a better understanding of where this, where this money went. Yes, Steve? I'll tell you, he'll, he'll have his hand up.
Go ahead, Don, go ahead.
If you contact them and get into discussion, they are gonna charge you $20 an hour for your discussion.
Okay.
Yes, Mel?
Justin, when, when, actually, the first, the second bill that was presented to this town was for $7,000. And there was a robust conversation here about that. And I actually objected to it. And if you recall, and you can go back to the tapes, I objected to paying any more because I thought it was unprofessional for these lawyers to double dip, to have two lawyers interview some, if not all, of the people. And your response was, and I appreciate it, was we were not gonna interfere with the independence of the investigation and therefore we're not gonna discuss that. But the fact of the matter is, they did use two people to interview most of the people. And had they not done that, we wouldn't be discussing about an overage. That's number one.
Right.
Number two, at the same time, I said, when you were bickering about the $7,000, I think Steve said, let me suggest $6,000. And I raised my hand again and I said, how do you know they're not gonna come back again? And, and the comment, and if I'm not mistaken, was, we're not paying any more. And I think we need to go back to those tapes and you'll see that there was an agreement here not to go beyond the $6,000. And I think now we're paying the price for people to, in, in your opinion, to be independent and then just bill us for whatever they want. And I find it, I find that to be a problem. You know what? At any dollar amount, if we, if we agree or disagree, if this was money well spent, or if there was a lot of money or a little money, it was a $10,000 commitment, we increased it from seven, for another six, and now here we are discussing yet another increase, which I objected to months ago.
So why don't, why don't we take a week and put it on next week's agenda and think about how the different paths.
The first step, the first step is to ask the person who prevents, who's producing the bill to, to explain. That can be done right away. And the new board can take a look at it and deal with it as they, as they wish. But that's, that's a logical first step where you're going to ask them to explain. Where this, where this, more in detail, where this overage coming from? You just had, you just witnessed a discussion between me and John Weingold, where he says it's because of this, and then I say it's because of that. Wouldn't it be good, was a good idea to find out from, from the investigator, a little bit more in depth as to what they actually talked about, what the documents were, where those emails are that came from Mr. Weingold to, that would be interesting, don't you think? That would be interesting?
I, I would like to add to that. So for each of the lawyers who did interview each of the people with, with respect to this investigation, I would like the date and the time from two that each one of them worked. On one of the bills that I saw, it was to the junior accountant, the junior lawyer, but not to the senior lawyer. I would like some evidence and I would like an explanation why they needed two attorneys to interview people for this investigation.
And Steve, I want to add to that. I think the first step is to find your written documentation of the limit you set without a set limit. If you never had that in writing, we, we're in a bad position as a town. You never set a clear limit with them and you don't have that in writing, you cannot prove it. So the first step is to find out if any email or any written record exists of setting a limit on their spending.
But Susan, may I, may I, may I add to that, if you don't mind? Then they could have hired three, four, five more attorneys and run up the bill to $30,000 and just run, they knew at the beginning that we had a $10,000 limit. I mean, this is just, it, it doesn't, you know, there's, there's reasonableness in this world. And this was not reasonable to double dip. Because I would say it again, if they didn't double dip, we wouldn't be discussing about a $5,000 increase now.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion again. Never be able to make multiple same motion over and over again. I mean, they can say what we didn't, that we reached out to, that we reached out to the investigator. I asked them for a more, for a more.
Clarity.
What?
Clarity.
Steve, it's gonna cost you $3,000. Do that.
Can I, can I pitch in on this?
Sure.
This is Michelle again. I don't want to ask them anything. I want to tell them that their report is flawed, useless, and we don't want to pay any extra. I mean, what's, why do we ask them anything? We don't want any justifications. Their report speaks for itself.
So, Miguel.
What?
I.
Sorry, that's my opinion.
Yeah, no, listen, I, I mean, I'm the one who made the latter analogy. And there's, there's 15 different analogies that you can use when it comes to this report. I just described it to somebody else as a, as a detective toaster. I mean, you mix toast once or twice, but then you burn the house down. So, but with this, with this particular report, the first step is, yeah, you could go to this way. We're not, we're not paying anything until we get this explanation. But I think the, I think the townspeople, I think the Select Board, I think the Finance Committee needs a better explanation for it. I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying that, let's see if they, let's say if they give a better, a better explanation.
Well, now the council's online, why don't we?
If you don't reach out, that's fine. I do think we should keep moving along the agenda if we have six o'clock.
Why don't we ask Brian, what our legal obligations are?
Good idea.
Brian, are you on?
I'm here.
Hey. Oh, you, you heard, you heard the crowd? Come on, I'm your, your salary.
Legal application. Well, I.
Go ahead, Steve. No, I'm saying you heard, you heard, you heard members of the, of the public that are very concerned that, that perhaps, I don't know, perhaps.
Well, if, if there's questions, if there's, if there's questions, you know, that the board wants answered, you know, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer, you know, those relative to the outstanding balance and how you care to address it. You know, normally, if there's some questions as to an overage, you know, you could follow up with the investigators or with, with Corinne and her office and inquire as to why, you know, the bill went over. You know, generally, you know, you establish kind of a good faith estimate when it comes to these investigations. You don't really know, you know, exactly the bottom line when you start the investigation, whether it's an investigation involving one complaint or involving 17 complaints. You know, so the, the expense of an investigation is driven by the number of interviews that are conducted, the number of documents that are reviewed, the number of people that you have to sit down and talk to. And that probably is a, you know, an explanation as to why the amount that was ultimately billed is in excess of what you initially probably discussed with Corinne or any of the other investigators that you spoke with.
But if the, but if the Select Board sent a notice to, to, to this organization and said, we've been granted another $6,000 to complete the report, isn't that a notification?
Find that email.
Yeah. It certainly puts on, it certainly puts them on notice that you have $6,000 left to spend that, you know, can go towards their bill. But, you know, if their work is incomplete and their investigation's incomplete and they haven't had the ability to complete their investigation within that budget, you know, they're gonna continue to do the work. And then if there's some bill dispute subsequent to that, then, then you can take that up with them. You know, but they're not gonna do, you know, you know, a, a lackluster job in light of the fact that there's a budgetary constraint. If, if there's additional interviews that have to be conducted and the report has to be revised or whatnot, then, you know, as an investigator, that's what they would do.
Okay, so, all right. So first of all, I will, I will locate that, I will locate that email, because I know it was sent as soon as we got the approval. It was, they were notified that they had a limit. But again, I, at a minimum, we need to get a better explanation of what the, what the individual charges were. Yes, Peter?
Peter Merkett. This is not a normal way of doing business. If I'm building something for a client and I've given them an estimate or a price and things come up as I'm working and I should go more, I would talk to the client and say, do you want me to continue this way? I wouldn't just go to double the original cost budgeted and say, well, that's what I needed. You need to demand the report that was existing when they reached the original price. And you need to tell them whether you want them to continue with this report, continue with the investigation. It should be up to the Select Board to tell the legal firm what the Select Board wants them to do and how much they're willing to pay and make a judgment about the quality of the work that's been done. I might, I might go through that process and I might have a client say, this is great. This is, this is what I hoped for and even more than I hoped for. Keep going. I'll spend the money. It's just, it's just a backwards way of approaching, you know, a, a contract agreement.
Right. So just to use, to use that, I'm going to, just like I was building a house and somebody said, you know, by the way, it's gonna charge you $6,000 more. I would say, explain to me why. And that's exactly what I'm, that's exactly my motivation. Second. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Justin.
Fine. So the last thing on the agenda is, is to go into, you know, executive session to discuss, to discuss and review the executive session pursuant to the Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A-1, to discuss an investigation of any actions to be taken. We, the employees, the people of the investigation have been noticed, those lay-in employees. Those employees who have been noticed want to have it in public session.
I've waived my right to executive my open.
Wait the right to executive session.
Time.
Time, wait the right to executive session. Are there any noticed employees or people noticed on the investigation that are here that do not wish to have it in public session? Therefore, we're going to be having it in public session. I'm trying, you're making it sound like a... Okay, no, you just had a, you just had an expression of concern. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna continue this, which is to continue the discussion we had on Wednesday in public, in public session. We do have the county council here, as you just heard from, and we've got many members of the public. Let's, let's keep it, let's keep it civil if we can. So when we, so when we, when we... This way. So, so when we last spoke, so Justin, you asked if you could have this meeting because you want to have a, you want to have town council present. Town council's present.
So, yeah, I spoke to town council about the closing the investigation, and he more or less confirmed what we had discussed in March, which was that, if I'm not mistaken, Brian, once the board chooses to take any administrative action or not, the investigation is more or less closed?
Yeah, that's generally accurate, Justin, that the, you know, the investigation is not closed until the board either decides, you know, to close the investigation without taking any action or the board decides to take some administrative action against the individuals named in the complaint.
So I made a motion at the previous meeting, Brian, to close the investigation without taking any administrative action.
But we had voters prior to that motion, two to zero, that we were supposed to go into individual executive sessions to take administrative action.
So at last Wednesday's meeting, that you did not attend, there was a discussion with many interested people to close this investigation without taking any administrative discussion. The crux of it, and people can correct me if I'm wrong, is because, is because the people noticed on this investigation, there were of the, I believe of the five employees, two of them were not given the ability to, to, were not interviewed by the investigator, and therefore not, it was not, it was not fair to those individuals and to the other ones that did, were subjected to it. And for that reason, it was, it was, I made a motion to receive the investigation report and to close, to close the investigation.
Brian, I have a question. John Wyngold speaking. Can a two to zero majority vote of the select board to vote executive sessions individually with the employees be overridden at a later date by a motion that wasn't seconded?
I mean, if the board has voted, you know, two to zero to conduct individual executive sessions with the individuals who are named in the complaint, you know, that two to zero vote is a vote of the board. It's as if, you know, the entire board, you know, voted in favor or that the board has voted in favor of that course and direction. And the board could certainly, you know, reconsider that, assuming that a majority of the board votes to do so during the course of a properly posted meeting. If that hasn't happened, then that two to nothing vote to hold the individual executive session still stands.
Okay, so thank you, Brian. So I make, so I make a motion to rescind, if that vote was taken, I don't recall, if that vote was taken, I made a motion to rescind that decision and to close the investigation without taking administrative action. I make a substitute motion to deal with any potential administrative action regards to any employees at this meeting today.
What? Say that again?
A substitute motion to deal with any potential administrative action relating to the investigation regards to employees at this meeting here today.
Well, you don't have all the employees that are, that are, that are part of the investigation that are here. How would you do that?
Well, I thought this was exactly what we discussed last, that happened last week. We discussed, I was hesitant because I wasn't sure if the meeting was posted properly, but we discussed administrative action at that meeting. No? We did. So I don't see why we can't discuss it at this meeting.
Because everybody's here. We voted to do individual meetings.
Can I ask a question?
That was your idea.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question for you to ask council? Was it okay for one member to change it? That all people were supposed to be invited, and then only sent a letter to one employee and sent the virtual town sheriffs to their afterhouse? When that wasn't voted on, when it was voted on to have all the employees be noticed?
Yeah.
I'm sure he's not gonna answer me, so you're gonna have to ask him.
So I regard, I think despite what may or may not have happened in the past about how to schedule, we're all here now. All of the employees present have waived their right to executive session, so let's just deal with it now. I know that, I know that last week I proposed a disciplinary letter, and some people came to me and said, "Are you saying that only one person is responsible for everything, for everything that happened in the last year?" And, and I'm not. I think it is important to acknowledge very shared accountability, especially amongst the select board individually and as a board. The report after, in my mind, identified that select board member May Cook is likewise unwilling to communicate freely with no. This is clearly a breakdown in the relationship between the select board as chief executive body of the town and its chief administrator. Regardless, any member of the select board as an employer should be willing and able to work cooperatively toward a productive and respectful work environment and the employee manual demands as much. We find that not doing so is a failure of leadership. And I think that our select board and me individually, I will take responsibility. Our failure of leadership has definitely contributed and been part of what has allowed the situation to spiral downwards. Aside from the fact that the buck always stops at the select board as chief executive, you know, there were very particular failures of leadership. And I think that moving forward, whether it's leadership training or just, or following the recommendations in the report, the select board needs to acknowledge its accountability for its role in the situation. I also think that the, and the other thing that happens is, you know, as the select board members, our boss is town meeting, is the people. And so we'll be held accountable either at election or at recall elections if that happens. And I'm sure, and I hope, and I trust that we will be held accountable. And what, although I don't agree with how it was done, you know, all the information is out there, so the ugly and worse of what select board members have done is all, is all out there for the voters to look at when they vote for us. So we will, I trust we will be held accountable for what we've, what we've done that's bad and what we've done that's good. But I, for one, individually and as a board, think that we hold and share part of the responsibility for what allowed, for what allowed this situation to happen. I still think that the report requires action in line with the, with the, with the town handbook, and that we have to be responsible and accountable for preventing harassment and retaliation. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about the recommendations in the report. And one of them is that immediate action must be taken by the town to address retaliatory conduct. So I will propose again, and I'm only gonna make this motion once because I don't believe in making motions again and again. But I will motion to put in Melissa's file this written warning, which I think will address the recommendation for immediate action to address retaliatory conduct and hold accountability in that way. So I will make that motion. And I know that you've, I proposed a case ago, so if anyone wants a chance to read it, they certainly may have had the chance. So that's my motion.
I appreciate, Justin, this Don Cooper. I appreciate everything that you have said. And what you've indicated, although I don't agree with you, as you know, on the contents of the document, you're entitled to your opinion. But you have said that you want to follow the employee manual, and that you think you are following. The employee manual is very clear. It says disciplinary action is intended to be corrective and remedial, allowing an employee the opportunity to correct a problem. The initial step will be discussion between the supervisor, which in this case is the select board, and the employee, with the hope that this will bring compliance with established procedure. So to follow the employee manual, which I think there's contractual right, right, the employees have for you to do, I would ask that you consider making this an oral statement to Melissa to see if the other members in the board will agree, but not to go to the second step of the written warning, because it's not supposed to happen. And there has never been a joint decision, a majority decision by the select board asking anything of, or directing anything about Melissa. So I would ask that you consider that.
And I'm certainly prepared to have a discussion with the employees that are here. I did it, I did it last time. Some people felt that it was not significant enough when I said that, I thought that we all made some errors. And I understand that, that, you know, that some people would sound like I was just kind of by-washing over the whole thing. But as, Justin, as you stated, and you're right, it was a total failure, failure of leadership. This board dropped the ball, all right? We should have handled it, we should have handled it better. And the investigation report that went out states that very clearly. It also states that, that, that there are no written, there are no written procedures, and there's no training for select boards and for employees that make everybody feel comfortable dealing with the situation. This is a situation that evolved in a small town, and in the past, people just got in the room and talked about it. I understand the world is more complicated these days, but we still have the ability in Monterey to actually have a discussion of that. But, but the report clearly says, and now everybody's got a chance to read it, that multiple people made errors. So, so that's, and that was the reasoning behind my, my view to design my name to, to this written letter, because seeing that one individual on the roll, and we're all covered.
So, and Steve, I understand the point about shared responsibility. But shared responsibility does not mean that everyone is equally responsible or responsible in the same way. Everyone played their own role in the situation as it developed. And like I said, I think the select board and its members are some of the most responsible people. And there's nothing to issue against us, other than the fact that the report is out there, and you're up for election, you're not running again. John's up for election one year, I'm up for election two years. Whenever the recall, whenever the recall provision passes the legislature, if it does, any select board member could be recalled at any point. So that is the way in which we are held accountable. So I would say shared, shared responsibility doesn't mean no responsibility. It means everyone's responsible in their own way and should be held accountable in their own way. And, and I think that's, I wanted to clear that up. No, it's not all one, it's not all one person's fault. But there's just not, you know, what are we gonna do if Steve did something, I did something? The voters are gonna vote us out.
So, by the way, so can we just, can we just make one thing clear over here, okay? Because I, because I have, I've certainly been in the office longer than the politics individual. You don't do anything to, for the purposes of election or not being elected. You have to put that completely out of your mind. You sit at this table, I'm glad Mr. Roywitz is here, I'm glad Ms. Cooper is here. You sit at this table, you focus on what's the goods for the people of Monterey? It's not, well, what's good to like get reelected, or, you know, people, if people, if people don't want to vote for you. I was voted out in the middle of, after my first term. You do the best you can, and if people like it, great. And if they don't want it, if they don't like it, but the only things you think of is, what is, what is best for the, for the people of Monterey? The other, the other point that I'll make first, let me make a point, and then show you first, and then you make. Is that if, if we had written, if we had written Rules of the Road over here, and somebody went ahead and violated it, absolutely, write them a letter. But the point that the investigator was made, which is, which is really important, is that they're saying there were no Rules of the Road. I mean, the Rules of the Road that existed, including the employee handbook, were vague at the very, at the very best. So if the rules don't, so to fault somebody, and again, this is, I, I know people don't like, so I understand. To fault somebody specifically for breaking the rules, but the rules are not, are not specifically down there, is not, is not right. And, and however, now, some goods are gonna come out of this. Because this town is going to get their act together. They're gonna come up with a perfected employee handbook. They're gonna come up with the rules for people to file for harassment, and who gets to do mediation, and who doesn't have to do mediation. There's gonna be specific underlying steps that people are gonna take. And if they violate the steps, yeah, you can point to those steps and write them, and write them a report. But right now, as the investigator said, everything here in Monterey is vague. And because it's vague, it's hard to say, well, you know, this person's wrong.
Steve, you have the select board's handbook.
Well, I saw, and I've summarized the report down, report down to 10 major recommendations, in my view, when I summarize it. And that's kind of the game plan for me going forward, is to accomplish most of them, because I think that they're pretty good recommendations. One of the 10 recommendations that I saw was immediate action must be taken by the town to address retaliatory conduct. So Steve, how do you propose, other than a written warning, to those who have exhibited retaliatory conduct? How do you propose to address retaliatory conduct?
I have...
Sean, show us first, show us first.
Oh, Sean, yes, sorry.
Justin, thank you for everything that you've said so far. Definitely appreciate it. It spells out in the employee handbook and in the investigation what, how you're supposed to proceed with warnings and verbal warnings and written warnings before your termination. It seems that you're out of, you're out of step. You've missed the verbal warning, unless we're all missing something here. I haven't heard a verbal warning. I think the proper way to handle this is to lecture us all, give us all our verbal warning now, and then move on.
And I think one, one thing that may have happened, and I don't think the employee handbook addresses this, is that sometimes verbal warnings, warnings are, you know, not with, not with the whole board. And I know the whole board can't, can't act. You know, each member of the board is, has no power on his or her own. But I do think that these, that what we're dealing with is kind of egregious and repetitive and a pattern. So I stand by this, and I, there hasn't been a second on it, but this is...
So, so you have, as you said, we have the whole board here, okay? And again, and we have, we have some of the employees that were, that were, that were mentioned in the report. And, and we can, right now, in front of town attorney and virtue eagle, we can say to, to all of them, we can verbally warn the employees and the people that actually, that actually messed...
and the people that actually, that actually messed up. Because it was not just the town employees, I, I know I'm mentioned in it, I think Waingold's mentioned in it, I don't, there's a bunch of people that are mentioned in it. And we can have a, we can have a, we can warn everybody here that, that, that we're not going to, that we're not going to stand for this, that we're not going to stand for this. That, that everybody, we are stuck here on a little island and we all have to work together. And, and, and everything in this town is interrelated. You cannot do, you cannot run this town right now without a town administrator, you cannot run it without a town clerk, you cannot run it with highway, you cannot run it without the fire chiefs or the police chief. Everything is, everything in this town is interconnected. So what better, what, what better time, right now, to reach out to, to all the town employees and, and say, and say, this is, this is your, this is your final verbal warning that, that the town of Monterey is not going to, is not going to put up with any retaliatory behavior? And then you could, somebody violates it, you can send them a letter, yes, Sean?
A question for Justin. It spells out that you want to follow in the directions and the right, the right direction for the town per this interview. You're stepping right out of bounds immediately, why? Can you, can you answer that?
I, I don't know what, what you're getting at. You're just saying that it's too harsh of a warning?
You, you need to have a verb, it says you have to verbally warn first before you can take the next step. Where are you going?
I, I just think...
No contractual...
Sean, Sean, you're out of order.
It says it right in the...
Sean, you're out of order. Hey, we're, we're, they're all going in front of where you're completely out of order.
Correct.
I, I just think the, the egregiousness and pattern of the behavior and coupled with the liability that it could open the town to, it, it's something that, that needs to be addressed in writing and not verbally.
And that's exactly the point, by sidestepping the process, you're opening the town up to a lawsuit now. You need to go first, second, third. Don was the first one to raise this issue. Sean raised it the second and the third time and I'm raising it the fourth time. There is a, as egregious as you believe these charges to be, and I'm not going to, I don't want to discuss that, okay? There is a process and the first process is verbal. And you're, you've decided because you think it's so egregious, you're going to skip that step. And Sean's asking you why?
Well, I also, I will say that I, I did have conversations and alert, and alert people of, of the behavior, employees of the behavior, actually in, in writing before it, it continued to happen, so... You can't, you can't act as a... I know, I, I can't act, but you know, you didn't, you didn't call me, Steve, so it's kind of hard to deal with. But that, that's my proposal, if it doesn't get a second, I mean, that's that. So by the way, I should let everybody know that since Monterey, it's all about dignity. This is a, this is a very dignified way for a select board member to be presented in the public. John, very nice, you're back to the public. If you want to be here, face the public like a wolf. Very much yourself.
May I speak?
Yes, may I speak?
You're talking about following a procedure for a verbal warning. But when it came to my hearing, I was never given a verbal warning against the complaint against me. In fact, I wasn't even given the chance of executive session. So how are you saying that you're, that you're not following procedure? It was, I had a hearing board against me when I was on the conservation commission, don't you fault sitting in that? So you're saying that...
Official hearing?
Yes, it was an official hearing.
I, actually...
You should read the letter, it was an official hearing.
Actually, I, I think you're just complaining on, on the camera.
No, I'm not complaining, I'm making the point that you're saying that these people should be afforded a verbal warning. I wasn't given a verbal warning, I wasn't given an executive session and I was brought right to a hearing. So what is good for one is not good for the other? And let's not forget why we had to have this hearing in the first, this whole report in the first place that cost everybody $21,000.
$21,140.
Exactly. I mean, and what about the victims? Why are they being marginalized? Why don't they get any dignity?
Yeah, what about the victim that was accused of sexual harassment?
Yeah, and that complaint was not even validated.
All right, all right, all right, we're not going to have, we're not going to have...
Put it in the report.
But it's in the report. May I speak?
Steve, the motion, you can't, the motion has not been seconded. So that's done with, make your motion to close the meeting.
So I, I make a motion to close the investigation without, without the funding of the legislature, without any industry of action. To the extent that, that... To the extent that the employees of Monterey are hereby... Retaliatory behavior is not, is not to be tolerated in the town background. So this, there's no second on this motion from this letter?
No.
Then, then I'll, I'll second Steve's motion.
Oh, my God.
I vote yes. Yes.
Thank you, Justin.
So that was two of the...
You're going to invest it or you're thinking?
Not saying for the...
Okay, so two yes and one cancel.
And one what?
Cancel.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're, I think we're adjourned.
Well, you're not, you're not, you're staying on 6 p.m.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here, we're just going to be switching to Zoom, everybody. Go to the finance committee. Go to the finance committee agenda and click on the Zoom link there.